Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:30 PM. Today is Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. I'd like to call to order this special closed session meeting for the City Council of Emeryville, as well as the successor agency and the management of Emeryville Services Authority. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, and members of the public who wish to participate in this meeting may join us at the Civic Center on Park Avenue or participate using the Zoom link provided for in today's agenda. This time, I'll begin by asking if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryfarce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Bauders?
Here. Are there any ex parte communications to report from any members for items on the closed session meeting? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment. A member of the public wishing to give comment, and items on the closed session agenda have two minutes to give comment. Have we received any written comments in advance of this meeting?
No, Mayor.
Okay, comment is now closed. We'll turn to the closed session. Madam Clerk, the time is still 6:30, and I've adjourned us to the closed session.
The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:08. This meeting is adjourned. We are in recess until 7:15. The time is 7:08 PM. I return us from the closed session. I would ask if council would please report out in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:18. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:18. I call to order this meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. As previously noted, it's being conducted in a hybrid format. Members of the public may join us here at the Civic Center or participate using the Zoom link provided for in today's agenda. This time, I'll ask if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryfors?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Bouters.
Here. I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carr, second by Vice Mayor Welch to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryfors?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. The agenda's been approved. We'll move to item four, Special Orders of the Day. Item 4.1 is a presentation from PG&E. And welcome this evening. Hi, Ed.
Hello. Thank you for having us here.
Let the mic down. There you go.
Thanks for having us here. My name is Edda Perez. I'm with the Local Government Affairs Team for PG&E. I'm here with my colleague, Kalana Cortez. She helped prepare the slides and the deck for our presentation for today. And this presentation was inspired by our conversation. And of course, we have a new... And this presentation was inspired by our conversation, and of course, we have a relatively new CEO, Patty Poppy, who wanted us to reconnect with our communities that we serve. Next slide, please. So in PG&E, whenever we start an event or a meeting or presentation, we always start with a safety moment or safety overview. So in this case, the safety message is focused on being able to have an emergency prep kit for any type of disaster or an emergency event that you may need. For PG&E, we value the fact that we live in a high-risk environment that's increasingly becoming more volatile, and safety is our top priority concern. So in that kit, make sure that you have necessary food, water, medication, flashlights, and of course, the first aid kits, and a list of emergency contacts along with that. And you can definitely check out more of those resources at safetyactioncenter.pgne.com. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of what we're going to be covering, and this presentation is focused on informing the city council and the community. First, on capacity and the term capacity, we utilize that in terms of how we energize our new customers and businesses within Emeryville community. After that, we'll be talking about wildfire risk and enhanced power line safety settings, as well as public safety power shut offs. And I understand, as you may know, Emeryville does not fall within a high fire risk area. However, wildfires don't respect jurisdiction lines, so as you may see later on, that parts of Alameda County are high-risk. And when a high-risk fire does occur, we want to inform the city council and the community leaders that the steps that we take to protect communities and work that we do. And I know I jumped in terms of describing the last two enhanced power safety settings and public power shut offs. We're going to go more into that, because they're related to wildfire risk safety. But towards the tail end of the presentation, we're going to be covering customer resources that might be helpful for the community of Emeryville. And of course, we're going to have open discussion and questions. Next slide, please. So talking about capacity, next slide. So as you may not know, or may know, PG&E service a large diverse area of customer base that represents forty-nine to fifty-eight counties of California, including Alameda County, which Emeryville's in. We are definitely committed to safety and reliability of our energizing customers. When I talk about customers, I'll be using that interchangeably. Customers could mean residents. A customer could be a large, small business, or even a city. Because of the multi-tier, multifaceted aspects of customers, I'll be using residents and customers throughout this presentation. When I mention about residents, I'm also going to be mentioning people that we may not service. However, our work does impact them, and we want to make sure that we include them in that process as well. So for us to better service our customers, it's not a secret. For the last several years, PG&E has struggled to deliver reliability to our communities and hometowns. But for our new CEO, who came on board a couple of years ago, we are devoted towards partnering up not just with the customers, but also with leaders like yourselves. In order for us to be able to deliver reliability and safety to the communities that we do serve, including Emeryville, we invested a lot into the work that we're doing. That includes exploring new types of technology to increase the reliability and innovation of the grid. In terms of being able to service new customers that want to be energized within the city of Emeryville, we understand that parts of the grid, you know, may not be, maybe be very old. And we understand that we may have to divert certain types of capacity within the larger grid to help those customers to be energized within. And of course, you know, for many of us, we know that sometimes PG&E has struggled in terms of our resource allocation. So in order to alleviate the burden towards communities, we actually are currently exploring alternative funding in the form of federal grants and types of support for us to be able to upgrade the grid and to service better communities like Emeryville and the customer base. So just to describe in terms of when we talk about service, planning, delivery, and capacity, every year, at least one hundred twenty-five thousand applications are received by PG&E. And a lot of these are new service connections. So over the past five years, we've invested, we've doubled our investment into the grid capacity in ways that we could best service the communities, but also when customers do apply. So I'm going to describe first of the application process. Next slide, please. So for many of us, we are meeting the high crease of demand for PG&E in terms of what the community is facing. So for Emeryville, a lot of the new services that are being linked to our grid are businesses and investment. And we have created, and we're aimed at trying to, aimed at decreasing the customer weight of application to be linked to our grid. At the same time, we are providing more information, engaging with city council members and elected officials like yourselves, and also partnering up with city management to be able to understand if there are any delays that they could escalate to us. So we also partnered up with other entities out there, the California Building Industry Association, as well as Stanford University, to help redesign the process so we could better service communities like Emeryville to link them to our grid. But in order to ensure sufficient capacity and support for our customers, a lot of the, a lot of the planning has to occur within PG&E. So in this process, that's the reason why, you know, it's been a while, I realized, oh, I'm not even sure when's the last time PG&E has presented to Emeryville. This is probably the first, and it's not going to be the last. And it's not going to be reliant on one contact. It's going to be relying on a team that's growing. So if needed, for many of us, when we do break down the customer pool, we're talking about residential, we talk about large customers, we're talking about businesses that might be interested in Emeryville in terms of investment, and we want to make sure that those needs are met. So the process that you see right now in terms of the grid, I mean, in terms of the chart you see, shows us, shows everybody what we're doing in terms of how we are dealing in determining capacity for types of customers that we are having in terms of application-wise. Next slide, please. So in place, we have a comprehensive capacity work plan. A lot of that is focused on delivering for the customers, and of course, addressing the climate goals that we set upon ourselves in PG&E. So we have to balance between the resilience of the grid, customer safety, as well as delivering to the customers. It's not a secret that there are other factors that are out of our hands, such as climate change, that has put a toll on the grid capacity and the way that we are delivering with customers. But I want to emphasize that for many of us in PG&E, for definitely for the leadership, we are focused on doing more than just one thing, where we have the ability to chew gum and walk at the same time, and I think that's very important. And many of those factors is, one, investing in our grid with technology innovation. Two, in PG&E, we collect so much data, and sometimes in the past, and, you know, we'll own up to it. Sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. But the reason why we are focusing on data as well is because sometimes data's being collected in one part of the organization, or one part of the company, and another, and data, other types of data is being collected on another part. So right now, we're working fast and hard to make sure that data is being integrated within PG&E, so we could be able to be responsive and identify certain types of issues that we could address. And internally, for PG&E, sometimes communication is important. It's not, again, we're owning up to this. It's not a secret that sometimes communication does come out disjointedly at PG&E in the past. But one of the things that we do emphasize is internally to be able to communicate with our teams in the field, to the executives, and as well as the mid managers, so we could be able to deliver a clearer picture to yourselves as leaders of Emeryville, as elected officials, and also be able to understand the mistakes that we made, and to analyze that and bring that data back so we could improve. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go ahead and jump down to identifying, reducing wildfire risk, and I, you could go to the next slide. And as you may see, Emeryville does not fall within the fire risk area. But for us living in the Bay Area, wildfire issues don't, are not confined within the county, they're not confined within jurisdiction, they do spread. And sometimes even the air that we breathe are affected. So the orange part you see for Alameda County is considered a high-risk wildfire areas. Even though Emeryville does not, is not located in those areas, a wildfire, let's say of a high magnitude, could definitely affect the communities around it, including Emeryville. Next slide, please. So what do we do? How do we address that? And for PG&E, we take a multi-tier approach, what we call layers of wildfire protection. As some of you may know or may follow, recently, the California Public Utilities Commission has approved a general rate case for us to do undergrounding. And I know for highly urbanized cities and communities, undergrounding may not be something that is a priority. But in terms of long-term investment, in terms of the safety of communities, and for us to be able to mitigate costs in the long term for communities, undergrounding is definitely important for us. And of course, we are welcomed for any type of feedback, and for us to provide information to give more, more insight in terms of the undergrounding projects that we do have that may affect the Bay Area, including Emeryville. So one of the various types of layers that we present here are applicable for Emeryville. For example, you may see our crews going out there, reinstalling poles, upgrading poles. That's part of our system in terms of creating a stronger assets within Emeryville that could withstand certain types of weather patterns. I think many of you may, many of you have experienced about last year, the winter storms. You know, obviously, winter storms are not associated with wildfire, but it is a weather pattern that we do mobilize around. And that's one of the things that for us to reinvest into our existing assets, such as replacing poles and upgrading poles is important. Of course, for Emeryville not being part of the high fire risk areas, maybe perhaps vegetation management, or as we call it, in terms of keeping trees and branches away from power lines, is important. But what happens, let's say, in the eastern part, or parts of Alameda, in terms of our vegetation management, does affect not just those areas, but areas, including Emeryville, in terms of being able to have access to certain assets, to be, being able to clear out, you know, assets that are, that potentially could, if they're damaged, that could, you know, actually become a spark and cause wildfire issues within the region. And of course, like I mentioned earlier before, you know, we're constantly reinvesting in technology and ways that we could data analyze some of the issues that involve around wildfire, emergency, and risk planning. And we are hoping that on a regional level, especially for Emeryville, that we could provide that benefit for the community as well. Next slide, please. So this is just an overview of how we are conducting veg management. Sometimes we do give a lot of care in terms of the way that we treat vegetation, but at the same time, we understand that overgrowth around some of our assets could be a problem for some of the things that we could maintain in terms of risk and wildfire mitigation. This is an ongoing year-round program, as you could see. We do inspect throughout our service territory, which is a large service territory within California, inspecting more than a hundred thousand power lines. We have crews that are constantly patrolling, and of course, assessing the data, so we could determine the best approach in term, in protecting not just our assets, but being able to do the vegetation management that's applicable within that area, but also notified within the community around that. Sometime in the past, we've had, sometime in the past, we've had residents who've seen the work that we're doing, they're asking, are you taking down the trees? And part of the programming that we do have for vegetation management is to be able to outreach to the community and to educate them in that process, including yourselves as leaders. And next slide, please. So when you do, like the, like the items that I mentioned in terms of what we do for vegetation management, we send advance notifications to customers. If there are any type of public concerns, the work that we do, sometimes our customer, our customers elevate it to the city council members, and that we address that. Someone like me from another region would be able to talk to the city council, or as well as with city management, to be able to get more information on what we're doing. But of course, vegetation management is one aspect of how we are committed to safety and making sure that the assets around communities are protected. And we do record, we do capture data, and we do, are open for feedback. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about enhanced power line safety settings. And again, this is more specific for high-risk areas, but since Emeryville is located in a county of Alameda, this is probably something for more about awareness. Next slide. So what we call is EPSS, and this technology was developed with PG&E for us to prevent wildfires. And it's well-known that in the past, we've had issues where assets, transmission lines, when they are taken down by a serious weather pattern, that parts of the assets, let's say a line, comes down into a vegetation area, and then sparks and creates wildfire. Last several years ago, we implemented EPSS, and we've reduced our wildfires that have been sparked by those types of sources by a huge percentage, as you can see here. Next slide. So one of the steps that we do, so for EPSS, it's considered a reactive type of technology. There's no notification given to communities. In many cases, during wildfire season, during the year, EPSS settings are increased, so the sensitivity is a little bit higher. I know that may have created a lot of challenges for communities, but it's a safety protocol that we do take in order to ensure that communities are safe from potential wildfire. So in the case, in this case, as you can see in the diagram, or in this illustration, when a weather pattern hits, and let's say a tree branch hits one of our transmission lines, automatically, within one-tenth of a second, EPSS will be triggered. What EPSS is, is it de-energizes the line, so there's no power going through it. At that moment, we already have patrols and crews out there assessing the line, identifying where the damage is, and to create and do repairs. As well as, we in tandem, we have our communications team contacting our regional stakeholders, stakeholders like yourselves, and then communicate with the customers of what's going on. Sometimes the customers, for us, it may occur in terms of knocking on the door, sending a text if they opted in, as well as informing the leadership of that particular community. So once our teams are able to identify the damage to that particular line, they do and conduct repairs. During that time, we keep the line de-energized in terms of safety. We also focus on doing the repairs on daylight, because the fact that we're dealing with a large asset, we're dealing with a very dangerous situation, we want to ensure safety, not just for ourselves, but the surrounding community itself. But once we are able to identify the EPSS damage and repair it, we do notify our stakeholders, and we re-energize the line. And that's important for us, because I know at the end of the day, our customers, our residents, the communities that we service, they are obviously reliant on the work, the service that we do deliver, and we want to make sure that that power is returned back to them. Next slide. And this is pretty much the overview, what I just described. You know, when the outage occurs, there's no warning, but the moment it does occur, the data that we do receive is filtered in within PG&E, and then we reach out to our stakeholders on multiple levels, such as elected officials, agencies that we work with as well, first responding agencies including. Next slide. So the difference between EPSS, so we're here in this slide, power safety, power shut offs, what we call PSPS, is that for PSPS, you have advanced notification, and we go through a huge sophisticated and complex regimen in terms of notifying, as well as mobilizing. Next slide. So when PSPS does occur, there's a lot of lead weight going into that moment, going into that event. We do have our own system of being able to track complex weather patterns. We do have an internal system where we do put ourselves, our teams, into a state of readiness, so we could be able to mobilize if the weather pattern does affect a certain part of our grid. So we could be able to be onsite and to notify the customers and stakeholders of what an occurring event will be for PSPS. Next slide. So what are the factors that contribute to PSPS? One of those, here are the factors that we have in terms of what we do consider. One of those is low humidity issues, and this definitely does occur during wildfire season. We also look and monitor weather patterns in terms of winds and gusts, and we don't just look And we don't just look within the weather patterns in the state of California or within our service territory, but we also monitor weather patterns off the coasts, south of ourselves, and of course, east and beyond California. Of course, as you may know, weather patterns, they don't respect state lines. They're not going to respect county or, or city lines. And we have to monitor that constantly. We also work with other agencies and monitor the information that they put out. For example, the red flag warning, working with the National Weather Service, being able to get that data to determine what they are looking at and to be able to align that with the, our readiness in terms of being able to safely shut off power in the event of a serious weather pattern. And of course, on a year-round basis, we are, we are monitoring the dryness of vegetation through our service tor, territory. We get a lot of data from that, and we're able to crunch it and be able to analyze it to ensure that we're able to align that data in terms of the other factors that I just described to see whether or not we would need to implement PSPS. And last but not least, the human factor, being able to be on the ground. We have crews on standby who are constantly patrolling and being able to understand what's going on the ground and how, and how the weather patterns and all the other factors that might contribute to PSPS will be adding to the fact that we might be launching in that event. But at the same time, we also need a human factor to be observing those factors. Next slide. So what are the steps that we go through? One, we get 48, 24 hours before a power shut-off is occurring. And we do go through these steps in terms of warning of how we're going to proceed with PSPS. I know for Emeryville, I'm not sure when's the last time, I'll be honest, I'm not sure when the last time you guys had to suffer through a PSPS. But in many cases, on the news, a lot of the more high-risk fires areas and within our service tor, territory that do occur within, within Northern California, do occur. And sometimes we want to inform stakeholders who are aware of that, of information that we are doing in terms of PSPS. Next slide, please. So a lot of the questions asked of like, what's the difference between EPSS and PSPS? And like I described before, mainly for PSPS, we do give advance warning. So communities are aware, our crews are on standby. And the difference with that, with PS, EPSS, is that it's reactive. We have to respond in a very quick fashion. We have to understand where the damage is at within our transmission lines and why EPSS was triggered and be able to communicate that with stakeholders as well. Next slide. So I'm just going to jump down to customer resources. Next slide, please. So a lot of these resources are focused on customer information, as well as being able to understand and be able to tap into when we do, when we are in a wildfire situation. And I'm going to do a follow-up with the council here because I know wildfire is not a big issue right now in Emeryville. But we do have other types of programs that might be relevant for your residents, such as income qualify programs that they could tap into. We'll be following up with that by email to your city management. But for many of these platforms that we utilize, a lot of this is being utilized by, not just by ourselves, but also with other communities that are informed, as well as our partners within the ground, whether they're cities or CBOs. One of the key things that we do tap into is the California Network of 211. We find that that's a very helpful resource for residents, especially whether they're in a wildfire safety issue area or whether or not they are not. So one of the things that we want to help with the city councils is to be able to inform residents and customers alike of these types of resources. Next slide. And I'm going to leave it right there. I know I went through fast. I didn't go through all my notes here because I wanted to make this more relevant for a city of Emeryville. But at the same time, I also want this to be an open dialogue. So I'll stop right there for any questions and see what I can do to the best of my ability in my end.
Thank you, Ed, for your presentation. Members, do you have any questions or comments or feedback for PG&E represent, recognized member more?
Thank you for the presentation. And I appreciate the customer service focus that PG&E is focusing on. One priority for our city is sustainability. And a big part of that is solar panel installations. I've heard no shortage of complaints about PG&E delays, lack of transparency on interconnecting to the grid. It's kind of a cynical perspective, but you know, the idea is that there's no money in it, right? And often people, customers don't hear for weeks, months, and then out of the blue, you guys say, well, come out on, on a day, but there's very little coordination. Is there any effort to try to kind of fulfill the customer service aspect when it comes to, you know, a more forward-thinking, cleaner grid and power like solar?
Yeah, very good question, council member. I think for, and we'll own up to it, yes, there has been disjointed results in being able to satisfy customers around the solar, around solar panel projects. Currently, it's PG&E, as I mentioned early in the presentation. PG&E in the past, we've, you know, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. And so what we have seen in that is to be able to gather all the data that the organization is receiving, being able to work with cities to understand, okay, what are the delays and being able to service plan. I know for a fact that many of the crews that we do have are overworked, but that in a sense, I think would be alleviated if we could work closely with city management to be able to closely engage with your teams. In terms of the solar panels, PG&E does provide a certain level of consulting and advice for companies that do implement solar paneling for, for residents. But we do recommend if you, in terms of data, of us receiving information and complaints, to reach out to us. As city council members, if you do hear a complaint, no matter how small it is, email the government affairs team. If your public works people do have an issue about, some issue regarding our crews, maybe a delay in service planning issues or even a solar panel issue, or may, maybe far off from that, do reach out to us. Because for us not knowing, we're just getting the information as we are right now. So I would ask for you, council member, if you do receive those complaints, reach out to my team, reach out to me, and have a name, have an address, so we could follow up and make sure that those problems and those gaps are addressed.
Definitely, thank you. And I will send, send those to you over email.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions and from other members? Member Prifors?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. So I had an experience that unfortunately, the city manager experienced with me when I called him frantic that I saw fire. It was San Pablo and was this 58? Yeah, 58, something. So it, it was one of those blocks that goes from Emeryville to Oakland very quickly. And so, and so I was like, okay, who do I call? Who do I call? And so I ended up calling 911. And Oakland Fire were able to come out. And the, the fire unfortunately was in a, it was in a vehicle that where an unhoused person, unsheltered person was, was staying in. And so, I mean, wildfires are really important. I mean, we've all seen orange skies in, in Emeryville. But I, I imagine that, that these kind of situations will pop up. And it, it, and it was close to a power line. And, and the fire was going up the power line. And I, and I wondered, as, as I was watching, whether or not the power would shut off. And so I say that to say that if I were to report it, in your, one of your, your slides, you mentioned an app or, or a mechanism. So people are generally app-fatigued in terms of, especially during like a crisis, a moment like that. And so they'll either go to one or two apps at most, right? And so it's, and so what is PG&E doing to obtain any real-time data or maybe even some API feeds from those that are being used now? Whether it's either social media or, yeah, or, or some, certain apps like Nextdoor and others where citizen, where people tend to report those more often. And I think we even use one for our public works that people tend to use more often. Is there a way that, is there, PG&E have any strategy around connecting to those apps rather than having your own homegrown where most people have not downloaded? I know I don't, I don't have that app, and so, yeah.
Again, good question. I believe that particular fire incident occurred in August. Yes, August 9th or 10th. I know right now, currently, we've been working with city council member in Richmond, as well as a, as well as one of the fire councils in the area to get more information so we could present it to them. But in terms of the data you're talking about, I'm not sure if you are familiar with a company called Esri. They're the largest GIS company in the world. They're based in Redlands, California. And the reason I mentioned about them, this year, a wildfire safety team won an award in terms of how we are able to capture that type of data that you described into something that's able to, that we're able to read, which is essentially a map. Our team is actually, one of our teams is actually going into Nextdoor to be able to gather that data so we could pull it back into the large, the various databases that we have. I'm not going to go into data flows or API connectors, but it sounds like you are familiar with that. So I'm going to go a little bit into it, if you don't mind. One of the factors that we do deal with is, is, and this is for large companies or utilities, is that we're dealing with various types of platforms, whether it's a Salesforce platform, whether it's a software as a service platform. And one of the things that we do have to deal with is the API connector. And sometimes they, you know, you could probably just grab an API connector from Microsoft Suite and connect the data, and then here's your visual. But other types of platforms that we use throughout our organization may not have that API connector readily available. So internally, we are working with those vendors to be able to customize those API connectors and bring that data. That's what we're doing right now. With all the amounts of data that we're dealing with, sometimes we call it the, the data ocean. It's myself and teams within PG&E that are working together, that are trying to cipher, to go through that data, tap into other platforms such as Nextdoor to be able to capture keywords for us to bring it back to our, to the visuals that we could track and see what's happening. For that particular fire incident, we rely a lot on local partners, first responders. I think calling 911, it's definitely wise to do. But for us to be able to understand like the patterns of that, we do have that type of information. I'd be happy to arrange a time for you to meet some of those teams that do deal with that. And again, I'm not going to go deep into the, the various types of data platforms that we deal with, but that, it is happening right now.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, we're going to take public comment before we have any further discussion, which is what I always do. You can go ahead and have a seat, Ed. Thank you so much. Now is the time for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment has two minutes to give comment.
Okay, well, you're supposed to have, take public comment and then the discussion by the council member. So you did this backwards. That's the way it's supposed to be. That's according to the, the law, the provisions. Okay, Mr., is the presenter here, presenter from PG&E, Mr. Aparis. Seems like a nice guy. I actually feel sorry for him in some ways because he's here representing PG&E. And it's, it's really bad to see nice people that are kind of forced by economic conditions to represent like evil corporations. And PG&E is an evil corporation. So, so quickly, well, we all remember 2016 with the San Bruno explosions from the natural gas explosions due to PG&E incompetence. That's not my opinion. That's from, directly from the judge that adjudicated on the issue. Said that PG&E was, it was PG&E incompetence that caused eight people to die and 58 people to be maimed and, you know, grievously harmed. That's pretty bad for a corporation to kill people. And then we, of course, we've got the Paradise Fire, you know, the campfire up in Paradise. And then, of course, we have the, which I think is actually even, in some ways, more egregious, the 2016 plebiscite, the, it was called Prop 50 or 16, it might have been either 16 or 50, wherein PG&E executives told us, said that we can vote on whether or not we should, local municipalities can have local power or, or, or not. And PG&E was rallied against this thing because they wanted the monopoly control. They don't want municipalities to be able to vote for them on their own to have local power. And so they spent $50 million of taxpayer funds to stop us, to stop democracy.
Thank you for your comment.
And that's this corporation. So take it with a grain of salt.
Others who wish to give comment? Comment is closed. Any members who wish to have further discussion on the item? I just have a few comments. I want to thank Ed and your team for coming out. I know Claudia and Sarah, others are not here, but I want to thank you for being here. I do remember the last time we received a presentation from PG&E. It was 2018 or 19, we received the PSPS presentation. You know, I, I want to first just thank you for the concerted effort that I experienced as an elected official in receiving communication, transparency, and feedback. That is a change from my earlier tenure on the city council in terms of my relationship with PG&E and I think the city's relationship with PG&E. So I want to thank you and welcome that. I do have three things I just want to point out. A couple of them are, they're mostly comments and feedback for you, but since you're here, I want to just take that opportunity. First is that it's been in the media, but as a item that I really hope to see PG&E make considerable improvement on is the timing in which they partner with local jurisdictions and private development to cut on power to facilities that need power. This has affected low-income housing coming online. That's delaying people moving from houselessness to housing. It has been delayed in turning on traffic signals, which provide safety at intersections even in this city, where we've had traffic crashes in the past and the signals are added with the intent of providing safety and additional controls safety and additional controls on movement through the intersection. And we have to wait indefinitely for PG&E to come do that. And I really would like to see PG&E make a more concerted effort on that. Second item is trees and power lines. My first thing I did in 2016 when I joined the council was fight with PG&E about the removal of trees in this city for an insurance-based reason that PG&E was trying to remove trees with proximities to pipelines because of liabilities stemming from the San Bruno incident. And today, I don't see as much care given to the maintenance of trees or the trimming back of city trees near your assets. I understand that those who come out to do that work are not necessarily arborists or professional tree folks. They're maintenance people. But what it does do is it actually harms an important livability asset in our community. And while we're not a wildfire community where we have dead growth that needs to be pruned pretty easily, we're a community that's scarce for trees and is trying to do something about that. So I would just really invite additional dialogue about ways in which you can partner with the city to maintain the trees around the lines in a way that's safe for the trees and beneficial to the neighborhood. And then lastly, I know that the legislature passed and the governor signed Senate Bill 884 last year, which is the bill related to your 10,000 miles of undergrounding, looking to speed that up and gave a very ambitious timeline. I think the concern I have, you know, you talked about getting federal funding for it. The PUC estimated in its own estimation for PG&E that it would cost $3.4 to $6.1 million per mile to underground your utilities, depending on where it was in the state. And that's 3.4 to $61 trillion for 10,000 miles by 2032. And so my concern is, I'm going to be keeping an eye on that and how that is going to impact ratepayers because I don't see there being an amount of federal or state funds available to managably cover the cost of that. If there's any of that that you'd like to respond to, Adam, welcome you back to the microphone if you want to give comment. But if not, I'm happy to leave those as my comments and feedback for today. You would like to comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for those points. In terms of cutting power, I think we could most likely, well, definitely coordinate better. And that goes back to the data issues that we have within PG&E and we'll own up to that. To be able to coordinate with your city staff and provide a timeline or an estimated timeline. And if that timeline does change, to constantly communicate that with your key folks, with your team, to be able to understand where we're at with that. So that'll be one. And of course, if there are particular incidences in the past, please send that information to me so we could escalate that to our executive heads or at least at the regional level. In terms of number two, I agree, there could be more dialogue with that. And I think perhaps a follow-up would be a meeting with our senior vegetation management team within this area. And you're right, a lot of our work has been focused on high-risk areas of fire. And if there's anything we could find to be able to leverage that expertise for Emeryville in addressing those issues that you highlighted just right now, we'll be able to do that. And for me at this point is to receive more information regarding those incidences and those issues. So I'll follow up with you on that as well. The third one, that's a very complicated issue in terms of undergrounding. The scalability of undergrounding does change over time. So what we're talking about mileage and costs through ever-changing technology and improvements of how we do, how we underground, that cost has diminished. And I'm happy to share with the city council members information on that. I don't have that information with me right now, but at least if I email to yourselves, there's a paper trail. But more importantly, how we do, we do have extensive programs to help alleviate the cost that many of the residents, the customers will be impacted because of those items that you mentioned for that last point. And I'd be happy to send you that information, but it's not going to be a static dialogue. I'm not going to just email, burst you all this information and walk away. It's going to be a constant conversation for us to include Emeryville in that dialogue and that sort of building up information and knowledge in those areas. Long-term wise, undergrounding does work. But right now, we are facing a lot of hardships that the community members are dealing with. And we are, we understand that. And it's not far from many of us who have family members who live in the area to know that they are facing the same issues too. And next year, our focus is to continue building these partnerships with yourselves and to help identify resources that could help alleviate some of the financial challenges that residents are going to be facing in Emeryville and to help build that knowledge base of what undergrounding could do in terms of the long-term benefit for not just parts of California, but all of California, including Emeryville.
Thank you. Others? Okay, Ed, thank you so much for coming out this evening to provide us with that presentation. That'll close item four. Item five is announcements on commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have a report this evening.
Okay, item six is council member's special announcements for meetings reported on and attendance. Is there any member wishing to make a report? Member Pryforce.
So I had a meeting, I guess you could consider a special meeting, with Gloria, a former member of our public art committee. And, yeah, so I want to apologize to Gloria for misnaming her, misnaming you for, I used her husband's last name. And it's too much of a history of that happening for women. And so, and so I apologize. I asked you to send me a pronunciation of your last name so that I can say it correctly since I didn't get it. So I won't butcher that one and then issue another apology. But I just want to say thank you and thank you for always being a great neighbor and support to me. And in addition to clarifying that my conversation with her husband, that based on the conversation I had with her, I had with him, that there be, that the missing seats on the public art committee be filled by somebody with tangible business experience. And so it wasn't something that he said. It was based on the conversation that I had with him. And so I wanted to share that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, item seven is the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, item eight is ex parte communications. Is there any members wishing to report an ex parte communication for an item on this agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Item nine is public comment for the consent calendar and items not on this agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda in today's meeting or a consent item have two minutes to give comment. Is there anyone wishing to give comment? Two minutes, please.
Well, I'd like to say since Mayor Bouders is on his way out presumably tonight, what we've heard for the last two years is a lot of speechifying by John Bouders. Lots of speeches, lots of sanctimonious, didactic, finger-wagging speeches at us and other people. And, you know, you're entitled to do that because you're on the city council. But to the extent that you preclude your colleagues from doing that, namely, council member Pryforce, I cry foul. And that's what you did last time. I watch these meetings from afar and I don't appreciate you telling Mr. Pryforce, who is here because he's, the people voted for him, that he's not allowed to make speeches that you are allowed to make. No speechifying you said to him, didactically, waving your finger at him, treating him like a child. Mr. Pryforce is the people's choice. He's here because he overwhelmingly won his election back a couple of years ago. And so it's undemocratic, besides being incredibly insensitive and, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a psychologist. I'm not going to say narcissistic. But you wagging your finger and saying no good to other, your colleagues specifically, the dissenting voice on the council from making speeches that you reserve yourself a place for, completely unseemly and inappropriate. And so you're on your way out now and I say can't come soon enough. You know, I just don't appreciate it. And the people of Emeryville voted for Mr. Pryforce and we want to hear what he has to say. And we don't appreciate you standing in the way of that.
Others who wish to give comment for items not on the agenda or the consent calendar? Come on up.
I am addressing members of council and city employees who participated in the public censure of an elected official during last council meeting on 11/21. I was saddened and angered by the decision made by Mayor Bouders in interrupting and denying another member to share their story through culture and thoughts pertaining to the collective. It is actions like these that hold symbolism to racist, oppressive hegemonies around the world where certain people's thoughts, values and belief systems are valued unequally and give rise to progressively more abusive militarized systems of power. It is unjust to give avoidance to some, no matter how small. And it is with this, I ask, in relation to action item 12.2, that city council members consider how they are using their elected positions and public funds to maintain power for some with oppression for all. What type of city are you maintaining? Whose values was it built on? And what future are you now creating? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else who wishes to give comment? Okay, public comment is now closed. Item 10 is the consent calendar. Members, is there any items on the consent calendar that you wish to pull for further discussion or debate? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Councilmember Mora to approve items 10.1 through 10.4. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. We have two public hearings this evening. Item 11.1 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville granting an annual card room license to the Oaks Card Club for the calendar year 2024. Members, this is a pro forma item. Is there any member who wishes to hear the presentation? Otherwise, I seek unanimous consent to waive the presentation. Presentation is waived. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:09. The public hearing is open. Any member of the public who wishes to give comment at public hearing for the license for the card club has two minutes to give comment.
I'm sorry to see the previous speaker leave the room, the previous citizen's speaker, because that seems like a person that's paying attention. And I'm sorry to see that they will know, they won't see what happens here tonight, Mora. But I do applaud what that person said. So the Oaks Club, this is a company that doesn't pay its workers fair wages. They came out vehemently against our minimum wage ordinance. And then they came out vehemently against our plebiscite wherein we increased the taxation on this card room, this gambling concern, to almost the Bay Area standard, almost the norm. Not quite up to the norm, almost. That was many years ago. The owner of the Oaks Club came in here and said that if the citizens were to pass this resolution, it would drive them out of business. And it's a fine family organization, he said. It's a gambling casino. And in fact, we did pass it and then he didn't drive them out of business. So it was a scam. And then he doesn't pay, he came out vehemently against the minimum wage ordinance, as did our mayor. Mr. Bouders came out against it. He made a, he did a move to lower the wages of the poorest among us. I'm talking about Mr. Bouders back years ago. And so I don't appreciate this business. I say this is a business that's not welcome in our town because they don't have Emeryville values. Emeryville values are that we pay people a living wage and we treat people with dignity and respect, notwithstanding the recent behavior of the mayor and others on the council. We treat people with respect here and with dignity. And this concern does not do that. The Oaks Club does not do that. Thank you.
Are there any other members who wish to give public comment at the public hearing on the card room? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:12. I closed the public hearing. Members, is there any discussion on the hearing license? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Mora and seconded by Councilmember Carr to approve the license. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The license has been approved. The second public hearing this evening is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville granting a waiver from the noise ordinance to Pacific Gas and Electric Company to complete a new cable installation along Shellmount Street between 65th and 67th Streets on Wednesday, December 20th, 2023, between 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Is there any member who wishes to receive a presentation on this? Otherwise, I would ask if we could waive presentation on the request. Presentation is waived. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:12. The public hearing is open. Members of the public who wish to comment at hearing on the request for a one-day evening, noise ordinance waiver may do so. Members of the public wish to comment? Seeing no hands raised, public comment is closed. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:13. I'm closing the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to discuss the item? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Member Pryforce?
I know that we, and kudos to the staff for doing their best to communicate to residents. But if there's a way that we can, and I've talked about this in the past in terms of how we as a city communicate to residents. But sometimes when it's late at night, I'll get the calls because residents know to give me a call because I'm a night owl. And, you know, and I told them and I shared with them the communication that the city has had. But if there's anything that we can do to improve our communication to residents, especially those residents in that area, maybe it's something to take it a step further so that I don't get those calls when there's drilling and then people are upset. And most of them will say, well, no, I didn't get that thing in the mail or maybe they didn't get an email. And so whether it's a sign, something that can better communicate that the, that work is happening. Yeah, so it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't upset them. So, thanks.
Others with comments or questions? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Carr, second by Welch to approve. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. It takes us to our two action items on the agenda. Item 12.1 is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville related to gas-powered leaf blower use and restrictions on it. And who would be giving the presentation this evening on this item?
Nancy.
Nancy Humphrey, thank you. Good evening, Nancy. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am here to talk about a proposed ordinance restricting the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. And this was, this was born in the Sustainability Committee. And the members of the Sustainability Committee recommended it to council. So, next, please. The bottom line here is why would we do this? And the answer is that the two-stroke engine that the gas-powered leaf blowers use is, if not the, one of the most polluting types of engine that you can have or motor. It, and there's nothing to stop the pollutants from coming out. So there's, so it creates toxic fumes, it creates a lot of noise and air pollution. And those things then lead to negative impacts on workers, members of the community, and particularly the most vulnerable members of the community, the old, the young and those with respiratory issues. It also contributes to, to climate change in a negative way. So that's why we're taking, we're proposing this ordinance. Next, thank you. You may have heard that there is state legislation coming from the California Air Resources Board that as of January 1st of 2024, there will no longer be allowed to sell, this is tricky, to sell gas-powered leaf blowers or some other motors that were manufactured after 2023. So stores can still continue to sell their stock, but manufacturers can't make and sell new ones. So that'll cause a phase out over time. 55, actually, it's more, closer to 70 now. California cities already regulate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. So the industry is, this is not news or a surprise or something they, they aren't already dealing with. This is manageable seemingly. So the ordinance would prohibit the use of gas-powered leaf blowers within Emeryville. The enforcement is designed to be complaint-based and undertaken by our code enforcement officer. A key point, and I'll get to this in the next slide, is that the responsible party, the person on whom enforcement could be levied, is the hiring entity, not the landscaper, not the employee, but the person in charge of hiring and contracting for that work. Our plan for enforcement is first to do outreach before this goes into effect, which is proposed to be July 1st. We would reach out to landscape trade associations, HOA managers, building managers of any other properties we have. And then, of course, with the city's usual avenues to the wider community. After that, then a first complaint would lead to a warning and subsequent, and education. Subsequent complaints would lead to perhaps administrative citation. So let me go to the next one again, just to clarify. Oh, next slide, please. About the responsible parties, we didn't want to have an inequitable system that punished the least paid and, you know, the worker. So it is whoever hired that, if it's contracted person, property owner, a tenant who hired them, not just a tenant who happens to live there, the head of an association of tenants or owners or a business owner. Or it could be a homeowner, you know, who was just, or a tenant who's just doing their own work. One more slide, please. So, and the cost, and Councilmember Mora was, help me. So, and the cost, and Councilmember Mora was, help me with this one, the, the cost of compliance is low. If you're in a, a small property, say you're an individual tenant or homeowner, there's equipment available at price points beginning at twenty-five dollars. So that feels affordable. Also, we're not require, we're not requiring that you use a blower. You could of course use all your other techniques of brush, uh sweeping or raking. For larger properties and landscaping firms, uh the California Air Resources Board has a, an incentive funding program available that, that helps these, these entities buy electric equipment. So the cost is, that's, that's how the costs are handled. And that's, that's my whole presentation today.
Okay, we'll take public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on item twelve point one related to the ordinance on gas-powered leaf blowers have two minutes to give comment.
Why two minutes? We used to be allowed three minutes before Mayor Bouders got in control, we were allowed three minutes, so why two? That question won't be answered because uh it doesn't have to answer it. So now on to the, the, the issue at hand. This is another complaint-driven ordinance. And why should, I'm, why should we have complaint-driven ordinances? Shouldn't we have ordinances that are taken care of by the policing powers of the city of the, of Emeryville? Why is it up to us to, to be the, the, to be the police? And I don't want that job. I, I expect you to do it, I don't, I pay you guys to be the police for the ordinances that you pass. And I don't want you relying on us. And then on top of it, when you rely on us, if it's a, if it's complaint-driven, then you, the specter is raised whereby it might be an unpopular person complaining. And then we've seen what that net, the net result of that is, and that is the complaint is not followed through because it's the person complaining is unpopular. So we don't want to go down that path, we want a fair and equal treatment under the law. We don't want to have complaint-driven ordinances, we want to have ordinance, the city that can take care of the, of the, its own ordinances by itself. It's on automatic, not relying on us, especially since it's popularity-based. And then I was going to say that electric leaf blowers are just as loud as gas-powered leaf blowers. The, the presenter said nothing about that. In terms of negative impact for the residents, uh it's just as loud. True, there's not any, there's not the, the carbon, uh, or the, or the pollution as a result of a two-stroke engine, but it is just as loud and we should uh recognize that, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give comment on item twelve point one? No hands raised, comment is now closed. I'd like to invite Councilmember Moore to start the discussion.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, Nancy. I, I really appreciate the work that went into finding the, that there's actually, we would be in good company uh in this, with this ordinance, you know, with fifty-five other municipalities having restricted or banned the use of these uh gas-powered leaf blowers. And, and one of the, some of the information alluded to is just how polluting uh these are. And, and I'm, I'm still kind of dumbfounded by some of the, the, the data on this. You know, they've measured the tailpipe emissions from a Ford F-150 Raptor driving from Texas to Alaska. Thirty-nine hundred miles does not generate as much fumes or pollutants as thirty minutes with one of these two-stroke motors. It's remarkable, but then again, when you walk by one of these in use and you, you catch a whiff of those noxious fumes, maybe it's not all that surprising. Uh and I also think that the timing of the proposed ordinance could not be better uh with the explosion in electric appliances and battery technology. During the Sustainability Council meeting, I just pulled up the, the Amazon site. Uh at, at that time, there was a blower with twenty-six thousand four-star reviews for twenty-five dollars. Here's one for thirty-five dollars with thirty thousand four-and-a-half star reviews on, on Am- Amazon as of this, this moment. So I, I, I think the, the options are, are there. This is not a onerous financial burden for this transition. Uh and I think it's a very common sense thing to do for our city, uh do for sustainability, the air that people breathe, and, and the noise, the noise pollution. I, I've, I've witnessed the uh going from those two-stroke mo- uh motors, which are actually quite loud. The new ones, however loud people think they are, they are quieter. And you can look up the decibel readings uh online.
Thank you, others who wish to give comment on this? Member Pryforce?
I, I just want to commend Councilmember Mora and the staff for coming up with a more equitable um response to folks who have some of these machines. And um it, it, similar to, uh, I guess, uh, when we banned gas-powered stoves or, or anything that has been a mainstay, a financial cost to people, especially to um, to those who are financially struggling right now. And uh, and it's hard when you're, they're just blowing leaves and we're telling them, well, you can't do that. Um, and uh, and they've had this thing that they've invested in. And so I, so I, I, so we do need to get rid of them, I totally agree. But I, I just appreciate the approach that you all taken. Uh I agree uh with, uh, with, with the citizen when it comes to complaint-driven. It's, it, it's complaint-driven or it's policing, and the last thing I want is Chief Jennings to hop out of his car, which is now electric, uh, and roll up on the house because they have a leaf blower that, uh, that, that, that our officers recognized as, as being illegal now. And so, uh, so we, so complaint-driven historically has always been used uh against black and brown folks. It's, I mean, that's just, it, it, the way it, it has been uh for so long. So uh I, I'm not a fan of them, but it's the only thing that we have right now. And so as long as we know that these complaints aren't harassment or, um, and also that we can provide some sort of financial incentive or support uh for those folks, um, uh then I, uh, I'm not going to modify, just like the last one, I'm not going to modify the motion. I'm just, uh, going to uh, uh, approve of it as well. And so thank you, thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Member Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Nancy, uh for doing the presentation. I just want to clarify that point about the community outreach. If you could let the community know that they have the opportunity to, to comment or participate in whatever feed, uh feedback that needs to be given by, before the ordinance goes into effect, they have that opportunity, and how that will be disseminated, or, or if, if you could just provide that information, that would help clarify that.
Okay, well, as I, as, as I understand it, the opportunity for, for feedback is at tonight's meeting and at December nineteenth meeting. At which point, if, if this passed on second reading, it would, it would be official. If, so during the outreach that we do winter and spring before it actually goes into effect, obviously, if we get feedback that somehow shows us that this is untenable in some way or needs to be changed, we'll come back and do that. But I think officially, the input is here and in two weeks. Yeah.
Thank you.
My Councilmember Moore?
I just had a brief clarifying comment just on the point of equity. We, we did discuss this extensively in the Sustainability Council. The idea of the cost of upgrading equipment falling onto somebody who's maybe not financially prepared to do that. But there's another equity point that I think um overrode, which is the, the people who are breathing in polluted air. And that is something that we can't lose track of uh when talking about equity in a holistic sense.
Thank you, and that was my comment, was I want to thank uh the Sustainability Committee and especially Councilmember Mora for your leadership on bringing this item forward and the staff who helped prepare this at the legal level and in the environmental department. You know, as the Chair of the Air District, uh we are always looking at the ways in which human health is, and public health are harmed. And while we don't have regulatory authority as a body over appliances such as this, one of the things that we do study and we're familiar with is that, um, as Councilmember Artic, Councilmember Mora articulated, the amount of emissions that go out of thirty minutes of the operation of one of these things, it's actually, to the equity point, it's not just not laying the cost on the worker. The cost on the worker, as I like to say at the Air District, is actually the premature death of the worker. And workers who are in landscaping that use these gas-powered blowers are exposed to extremely high levels of P M two-point-five benzene and formaldehyde, all of which are extremely toxic to human health. And breathed in, and the quantities and the durations for which people breathe them in, in the course of using them in their day's work, can decrease their lifespan by years, actually. Um and it severe correlation, high correlation with lung cancer. So we're not, you know, enacting this law simply to um improve air quality alone. It's also a public health initiative, I believe, because we're helping uh working people uh live healthier lives. If there are no more comments, I'll entertain a motion to read this ordinance as title by title only.
Motion to read the ordinance by title only?
Aye, second.
Thank you, a motion by Carr and a second by Welch to read by title only, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, the council having opted to read by title only, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, reading by title only, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adding Article Six, Chapter Fifteen, Restrictions on Gas-Powered Leaf Blower Use to the City of Emeryville Municipal Code and authorizing the city manager to take actions related to implementation and enforcement, sequestration determination exempt pursuant to Guideline Section one-five-three-seven-eight subsection A, one-five-three-oh-eight, and one-five-oh-six-one subsection B, subsection three. Thank you.
The title having been read, is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Move approval of the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve the ordinance, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, the ordinance is approved at first reading, it will come back for second reading on December nineteenth. Item twelve point two, our last action item, is a resolution of the City Council approving and accepting the Emeryville Police Department's A B four-eighty-one Annual Military Equipment Use Report pursuant to Government Code Section seven-oh-seven-one sub-paragraph D and renewing the ordinance from twenty-twenty-two related to policy seven-oh-seven for military equipment. Is there a staff presentation on this item?
There is not, but staff are available for questions.
Are there questions for staff related to the policy? Okay, we'll take public comment. Now is the time for public comment, a member of the public wishes to comment on item twelve point two has two minutes to give comment.
This is the Emeryville Police asking for uh a, a variant so they can have military weapons on, carry them on Emeryville's streets. Weapons of war. And this is not my opinion, this has come straight from this uh, uh, the State of California through the Secretary of State. Weapons of war. Okay, so the specific, and, and one, the thing we're talking about are A R fifteens assault rifles, and our police are carrying these every day on our streets. Do they need them? Well, they say they do, but the, the police in London, England, don't carry any weapons. And that's a city that's beset with terrorists. We don't have terrorists in Emeryville. We have like, you know, some people breaking, you know, laws here and there. We don't have terrorism. We don't need these weapons of war on our streets. And I, I draw the council's attention to the last time the City of Emeryville Police Department killed a person with, with a weapon of war, with an A R fifteen, that was in twenty fifteen, Yvette Henderson. And we should have a moment of silence for her after this. Because she was, she was killed on Emeryville Street, she was, uh, the Emeryville Police killed her with a A R fifteen. They're, they turned their body cameras off, so we never got to see the footage of it. But we know from the, from the court, the, the trial, that she was unarmed when she was killed. The kill shot came after she had been hit first in the right arm with an A R fifteen, the blue, she had a gun on her, and she blew the gun back behind her, so she had no way, she was unarmed. And then the kill shot came right after that in the head by the Emeryville Police Department with the body cam, wearing cameras off. People are allowed to have guns, so Yvette Henderson had a gun, perfectly legal, she never pointed it at the police, but the police killed her using a weapon of war. We don't, we don't need our police to be driving around carrying weapons of war on our streets, and that's what you're ready to say yes to here tonight. I, I, I think we should have a moment of silence for Yvette Henderson murdered by the Emeryville Police Department in twenty fifteen. Moment of silence for this.
Your comment. Are there any of the members of the public who wish to comment on item twelve point two? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed, is there any member who wishes to discuss? Member Pryforce?
So I remember um, uh, summer two thousand four, I think. But um, I was, I was studying in England and uh the bombing happened, the July uh bombing. And I was heading to see, heading to see my girlfriend, uh, went to the bus stop. And um, and be, and simply because of racial profiling, uh, the police officers stopped me. They pulled me, actually pulled me off the bus because I, I missed my flight. They pulled me off the bus and they were asking me questions, my I D, you know, and I told them, hey, I'm, I'm at Oxford, um, didn't matter. Well, I remember one, one officer um had one of those weapons of war, and he pointed it at me, and he was nervous. And, you know, I'm from Brooklyn, and so, you know, a, a part of me just wanted to say something, but then I thought about my godmothers back home and they wouldn't want me to say something at that moment. And so I just, I just followed procedure. There, there, it, it is scary. And uh Yvette Henderson or anyone um who has been gunned down by officers is, um, it's, it, it, they do deserve a moment of silence, and I, and I, and I want to honor that. And I'm going to do something that most, a lot of politicians don't do. I believe in our police, I believe in our police trained to use these weapons and, and, and these, in situations that demand them. Should these weapons be used in, you know, because I think about if, if, if something like that were to happen to me, uh, if I was in Emeryville and same thing that happened when I was a kid, um, or Yvette Henderson, if, if these weapons are used, you know, in that way, I will, I will be the first to apologize and I'll be the first to hold myself accountable should something like that happen. But I, I hold our police accountable, um, and, uh, and I, and I believe in, in them in terms of how they use these, uh, how they use these weapons. And they, and I wholeheartedly believe that they use these weapons to protect the public. Those are my comments.
Others who wish to give comment? That'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, council, uh, motion by Mora, second by Carr to approve twelve point two, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, the resolution is approved, we'll move to item thirteen, the department head reports.
No reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Reports tonight. Okay, that takes us to item fourteen, future agenda item request, are there members that have a future agenda item request tonight? Member Pryforce?
So um, I, uh, I watched the, the, um, the, uh, the Berkeley City Council meeting and um, and the, the protesters that, uh, that showed up. And um, I'm not going to make any comment about it, but um, it did have me explore Emeryville, uh, especially given Oakland's resolution as relates to ceasefire, that Emeryville also uh create a resolution as relates to, uh, a ceasefire. And, and specifically, uh, uh, I think all, I think, I believe all conflicts, but ceasefire, uh, which literally means stop shooting. As relates to uh the conflict in Gaza, um, between Israeli Palestinians, Israel, um, uh, and the people of Gaza. And so uh, so I would propose that we draft a resolution that can go be under study, maybe even look at Oakland's as a template, uh, as a, to submit a, a resolution uh as relates to a ceasefire.
Okay, are there three votes to agenda at the request of Councilmember Pryforce? A resolution to address and discuss a ceasefire in Gaza. resolution to address and discuss a ceasefire in Gaza?
Point of clarification?
Point of clarification, recognized, yep.
The Gaza crisis is a tragedy that has worsened every day. As members of, as representatives of a city, I think it is our responsibility to bring up issues that are of concern, and also highlight those issues. I remember that this happened when I was sworn in. The day I was sworn in, we did a resolution for, this council did a resolution for Ukraine. In times like these, I think it is even more imperative, times, polarizing times like these, that we be very careful about a unifying message. Therefore, I would like to know more about how this would deliver a unifying message before I agree or disagree to raise my hand for this. And this, this can be done at committee or offline.
What is the point of clarification you're seeking from the member making the request?
How is this going to create a unifying message?
Okay, you can respond to the request.
So, thank you, Councilmember Carr. So drafting a resolution, a ceasefire resolution, would provide us to be able to create a unifying statement. It would be Emeryville's statement to, to the world, but especially to the region, as to what our stance is as relates to ceasefire, similar to, as you mentioned, Ukraine. And in that, we can choose the language that we best feel reflects Emeryville. And, and I believe that through the process of this, a study of, of bringing in members of our community, we're very, very diverse, then we can find out from them how we can make a, an inclusive, unifying draft, draft resolution, very similar to the process that Oakland went through with theirs. I hope that's clear, I hope that clears.
Okay, thank you for the response. Members, the request is to have an agenda item to, agenda resolution to discuss ceasefire in Gaza. Are there three votes here to agenda that item? There are not three votes, the request is rejected. Are there any other requests? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, the time is eight forty-two, meeting is adjourned. And I'm going to go to the special meeting now. Madam Clerk, the time is eight forty-two. I call to order this City Council for a special meeting on today, Tuesday, December fifth, 2023. Madam Clerk, please note that this meeting is being conducted in hybrid format, and members of the public are welcome to join us here at Emeryville City Hall or via Zoom. Also, please note that all members remain present for this meeting from the prior meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this meeting.
Motion to approve agenda for this meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Carr, second by Welch to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Are there any ex parte communications members wish to report for this meeting? Seeing and hearing, you have an ex parte? Yes, go ahead.
I had a conversation with Brian Donahue about that.
About which item?
About the mayorship, mayorship voting process, yeah.
Okay. Item five, public comment for items not on the agenda. Are there any public comments for items not on this agenda? Madam Clerk, there'll be two minutes, please.
Okay, so the following elected officials, David Mora, John Bouders, Courtney Welch, and then the unelected official Sukdeep Carr, just said no to Councilmember Pryforce's idea that we should discuss and think about saying no to the killing of children, Palestinian children. The same four people had no compunction about voting about Ukraine, the, the war in Ukraine being, being conducted. But when it comes to Palestinian children being murdered, the, the four council members I just mentioned suddenly now are like weak-kneed. What part of, what part of this, I mean, this is, this is what the people of Emeryville, the city, your constituents would want, at least a discussion as to whether or not the City of Emeryville supports the murdering of children in Gaza. And you just said no to that, so this is a stain forever on you. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I guess I'm not surprised, but I'm shocked. Shocked that Mayor Bouders, who's supposed to be like, positions himself as this sort of moral force, can't get the gumption up to saying, discussing whether or not we should collectively, the people of Emeryville, decide that we don't support the murdering of children in Gaza. And the fact that you can't do that, after all, we've heard from you over the last two years about your moral outrage, this is the bridge too far for you? And then we ask for a moment of silence for Yvette Henderson murdered by the Emeryville Police Department? A moment of silence for an unarmed woman murdered by the people, by the Emeryville Police Department? Again, bridge too far for Mayor Bouders.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment for public comment on not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we have four action items. The first item is item six-point-one, the appointment of a mayor and vice mayor to the City of Emeryville for one-year terms that will expire December of 2024. And before we take nominations, we will call for public comment, as there is no presentation. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on the appointment of a mayor or vice mayor for 2024? For two minutes.
I pay attention to Emeryville City Council, have done for many years, and I, you know, there's a, sometimes the best word to describe what goes on here is depravity. Sometimes you guys do some good things, but usually not. Usually you're, we, the people are left wanting. So I'm, since I know a lot about what's in your minds, I'm going to make a prediction here, tonight, right now, for the cameras. What is going to happen, what's going to transpire in a few minutes? Councilmember Sukdeep Carr is going to make a motion to have Councilwoman Courtney Welch become mayor, because she's vice mayor now, be elevated to mayor, and then, and then she's also, Sukdeep Carr is also going to motion that David Mora be elevated to vice mayor. That's my prediction. Why do I say that? Because David Moore is popular with the, with the four of you, the council majority. Who's not popular is Kalima Pryforce, the city, the city council member. But who won the most votes in the last election between Mr. Carr and Mr. Mora? It was Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Pryforce and Mr. Mora. It was Mr. Pryforce. He won handily. He's the people's choice. He's the people, the people of Emeryville like Mr. Pryforce more than they like David Mora. True, they elected David Mora, but David Mora came in second place. So the people's choice is Mr. Pryforce. The people's second choice is Mr. Mora, and now you're going to tell us here tonight that your first choice is Mr. Mora. And that's depraved. It's anti-democratic, it's illiberal, and that's what you're going to do in a few minutes here. And Ms. Carr will, will, will lead the proceedings. It's disgusting.
Next commenter, welcome.
I just want to clear everyone's taste buds. I guess the previous commenter hasn't been paying attention for the last, because it's usually the mayor who gets to make the motion on who gets to sit in the seat as the next mayor. But I'm actually here on another note. I want to thank our outgoing mayor, Mr. Bouders, for his wise leadership over these last two terms that he served back-to-back. No one cares as much or works as hard as our mayor, and we are extremely lucky to have him. I have met many politicians over the last ten years, here in California, in the City of Emeryville, in Alameda County, in my service regionally, in Sacramento, and in DC, and we have hands-down the best mayor in the United States. He leaves big shoes, and I am looking forward to him supporting the next person who comes up, which I am sure he will do, and that person will do a fabulous job as well. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to give comment on item six-point-one? Seeing none, public comment is now closed, and we will move to nominations. And as has always been the tradition, I would like to make a motion to nominate a mayor and vice mayor, and obviously others may make other nominations if they would like to. That is the prerogative of the council. It has been my privilege to serve as mayor for the last couple of years, and to be on this council now for over seven years. And public services, an obligation that we choose to take freely when we run for office. It's also a discipline in engagement with the community, listening to others, and balancing that with supporting staff, running an efficient and a productive meeting, staying away from the drama that can be invited upon us, and moving the city forward to be its best possible version of itself. That's the extent to which I'm going to make comments and speech about my time here. I have been deeply grateful for the opportunity that the people of Emeryville have given me. It has been a wonderful learning experience and a service experience for me, and as somebody who has committed my life to service, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that we've done here as a team. I'm very grateful and proud of the staff at the city. You do incredible work, and I know that whoever is selected to be mayor and vice mayor alongside the remaining members here who will serve as council as one body, you will continue to support those people, as you have me, and worked with me in the roles that I know that we've had to work in together. Over this past year, I've had the privilege of working with Vice Mayor Welch, and Vice Mayor Welch is somebody who has a growth mindset. She is somebody who has come into her service in the city and has not been presupposed or predisposed to what the role would entail, what service would mean, or that she knew anything more than the next person. We have formed a very close relationship. We don't always agree, but what we do agree upon is that the service to the community is imperative, and that our work together as council members requires us to do our best. And so I'm very pleased to nominate Courtney Welch to be the mayor this coming year. And when it comes to the vice mayor, I believe that when we look at the further development of leadership, every person on this council has the ability to be a leader. It takes, it takes working with other people to do that, and so I'm going to nominate David Mora to be the vice mayor of the City of Emeryville for the calendar year 2024. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any other motions that people would like to make? There's a motion by Bouders and a second by Carr to appoint Courtney Welch as mayor and David Mora as vice mayor for the calendar year of 2024. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
I'm staying.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Congratulations, Madam Mayor-elect, and Mr. Vice Mayor-elect. We will turn to item. You are disrupting this meeting. If you disrupt it again, you will be removed from this meeting. You will be removed from the meeting if you disrupt it again. You will be removed if you interrupt again.
When do we get an answer?
Mr. Police Chief? Please remove him from the meeting. Mr. Police Chief? He's out. He's out. This is not, this is not a question. He's instructed, he's out. We're not going to have him harassing people during this point.
Am I being arrested?
No, you're being asked to leave the meeting now. This is what happens. You're not being arrested.
Hold on, if I'm removed?
No, you're out of order. You're out of order. You are out of order.
I'll be out of order. Uh, Brian, uh, Brian. Uh, Brian Donahue. Yes, I'm leaving, but this is an arrest.
It's not an arrest.
I'm forced to leave without my.
You are out of order.
Brian.
This is why.
I'm being arrested. This is an arrest.
That's what you can report. More falsehoods for your nonsense.
I'm leaving voluntarily, but I am being arrested. This is an arrest. I know, I know, but can you hear me for a moment? Can you handle a little bit? Yes. Thank you. The chief will allow it, yes. It, it's been done? Yeah, I'm leaving. And it's been, it's been done, a, a, a member of the council is going to become mayor, a member of the council is going to become vice mayor. Yes. She is, she also happens to.
This is, this is.
She also happens to be a black woman, and so I ask that these drama, the drama in these theatrics.
The drama is going on right now.
Uh, John Bouders.
Adding to the theatrics.
That all of them who subsided, all of them who subsided to give her her spotlight, give her her life. That's all I ask. I'm a fan of democracy. I'm being arrested right now. This is an arrest.
You can call it what you like.
It is an arrest. I'm being, I'm being forced out of here.
We'll look for the booking papers.
That is an arrest. See, watch this. Put your hand on me, please. Put your hand on me. Put your hand on me. He's touching me, he's forcing me out. This is an arrest. I'm being arrested right now, because I'm a fan of democracy.
Madam Clerk, would you like to join us at the front of the dais here so that we can have a wonderful swearing-in ceremony for our new mayor and vice mayor, please?
Yes. Thank you. Would you like to go first?
Oh, oh, I stand up, yes.
All right. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Courtney Welch.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm?
Do so solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as the mayor of the City of Emeryville?
And that I, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as the mayor of the City of Emeryville.
Thank you. All right. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, David Mora.
Do so solemnly swear or affirm?
Do so solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as the vice mayor of the City of Emeryville?
And that I well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as the vice mayor of the City of Emeryville?
Congratulations. Thank you.
And having completed item six-point-two, it is my privilege to turn the seat of the mayor over to our new mayor. And I believe you move over here to the vice mayor's seat, the vice mayor sits to the left. It's the way it is.
Can I make a few, can I make a quick statement? Can I make a quick statement?
You can do whatever you, you can. You can do whatever you want, it's your move.
Thank you, members. I'm very honored to have earned your trust and confidence. And Vice Mayor Mora, did you have anything that you would like to state?
Nothing that hasn't already been said. Congratulations.
Same to you. Thank you. I wanted to make a quick note, I just want to thank staff.
Can I make a quick statement?
Thank you, members. I'm very honored to have earned your trust and confidence. And Vice Mayor Mura, did you have anything that you would like to state?
Nothing that hasn't already been said. Congratulations.
Same to you, thank you. I wanted to make a quick note, I just want to thank staff. We have one of the most amazing staffs, I think, in the nation. What we do here in Emeryville is something really special, and to have a, a role to play a part in what we do here is nothing short of one of the greatest honors of my life. Emeryville is seen as a leader, not just through the region, but through, throughout the nation. People are paying attention to us, and they really think of us as an inspiration, as a city. And yet, just to being a part of that and being able to work with my colleagues and our staff on all of the work that we do here is, it's really magical. Thank you, Councilmember Bouders, for all of your hard work. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't see that he does on a daily basis. Like truly, you, you, you do not know. He does a lot, and I have large shoes to fill, and I'm, I'm confident, I know you'll, you'll have my back, and I can, know I can always reach out. Same to former Councilmember Diane Martinez. We're truly a team. Once you're on the team, you're always a part of the team, and I just feel supported so much by my current council members and, and former ones. And one of the compliments that I always get about Councilmember Bouders is his facilitation skills, that he knows how to run a good meeting, and that our meetings are always effective and timely, and that is a tradition I plan on continuing. And with that being said, we are moving on to item 6.3, the council, city council committees. And so, members, Madam Clerk provided sheets for you previously before the meeting started, and she is putting it up on the screen. This typically can be a little bit more of musical chairs when we have newer members on the council, but everyone has, was just appointed just a year ago. And so I would like to start off to see if there is anyone who would like to change or has any questions. Member Pryforce, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, you, you said it was a change or a question?
Yes.
Yes. The AC Fire Advisory Commission.
We're on, sorry, real quick, we're on the council committees, so budgeting governments, community services, public safety, sustainability, transportation, we're on those committees right now.
Okay, thank you.
Did you still have a change or any other comments?
No, so you say we aren't to that point, right? Okay. Oh, got it. No, go ahead.
Councilmember Bouders?
I'm fine with mine. Vice Mayor Mura?
I'm fine for the time being. I just wanted to put out there, you know, maybe now in our new roles, having some, had some time to chew things over, maybe we can revisit the topic in a upcoming meeting.
The assignments?
The assignments, yes.
Versus right now?
So I'm, I'm fine with things as they are right now.
Okay. Member Carr? All right.
Yes, Mayor, I'm fine.
Thank you. All right, I will now call for public comment. If there's a member of the public that would like to make a comment on item 6.3, not seeing anyone approaching the podium. Member Clerk, uh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone making a comment online, requesting a comment?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, I will close public comment.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve and renew the current roster for all five standing committees of the city council for calendar year 2024.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Bouders, second by Carr. Madam Clerk, the rolls, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mura.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 6.4 is the various county, regional, statewide boards and commissions and committees for calendar year 2024. Madam Clerk, also has that for display, and you also have your rosters in front of you. Members, please take a look at the roster. Please review. I will be calling on each one of you to see if there's any change or if any of you would like to release an appointment. Give you all a moment. Member Carr?
I am, I'm fine with my appointments, thank you. I'm just making sure that they are.
Vice Mayor Mura?
I'm okay.
Madam Mayor, I would like to change the Alameda County Mayor's Conference to have you as the member and Vice Mayor Mura as the alternate, and I would like to further offer for East Bay Community Energy JPA, it's now Ava Community Energy Staff. I, I've worked this past year with Councilmember Carr. She has, you know, attended several meetings on, on my behalf, and I know that she's been very interested in the sustainability space and wanting to grow in a regional opportunity and a role, and it would be my, my deepest pleasure to afford you the opportunity to be the, the voting and regular member for East Bay Community Energy and swap with me, and I'll be happy to serve as the alternate if you need me to, if you accept.
I, I very much appreciate it, and I would like to accept. Thank you, former mayor.
Madam Clerk, do you please mind making that update? While she is finishing that, Member Pryforce, did you have any? Yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the AC Fire Advisory Commission, I'd like to release it if anyone is eager to take that on. Please, please, I would like to be released.
I don't mind serving on a public safety portion of our committee or of our community. I, just what does this entail? I, if it doesn't conflict with any of my other service committees, I think I'm, I may be able to volunteer for it.
Member Pryforce?
Uh, so the AC Fire Advisory Commission, I'm going to be real, I have not attended one meeting. That, when it comes to like the scheduling, it tends to fall on, on major events that I cannot, like, so for example, the next meeting is actually during our ECCL meeting, and there's like a history of the meetings falling on dates that we, I could not, like, I legally have to attend, and so unless something happens with their, their scheduling, the AC Fire Advisory Commission, I really don't know much about it. I've never attended a meeting, and so it's, it's out of guilt and shame that I'm like, I need to be released, yeah.
Member Pryforce, to clarify, are you, are they not on a set meeting schedule?
Yes, they're on a, are they, yeah, I believe that they're on a set meeting schedule, but historically, every time they've had a meeting, it has been during, during moments where we couldn't, like, the last, the last meeting before this one was the meeting at the, the, it was, it was the ADEMS, and so I legally, you know, I had to, I had to go to that one. And I remember a, a meeting happening during our training, when we had, when we had to go to Sacramento for our training, and so it's been, it's just been, it's been really bad, and, and of course, there's a lot of cancellations, so there's been, so apparently I'm not the only one, so there's been a lot of cancellations, so it's just been, it's been bad overall. And I put that, I'll put that on me, but it's, it hasn't been good, so that's why I would like to be released.
Member Pryforce, to clarify, are you saying that the set meeting schedule is for the first Thursdays of the month, typically 5:30 start time?
Yes, and what I'm saying is that a lot of those, most of those meetings are canceled, and so a lot of people can't make it, and so, so you're setting a schedule for, and then you eventually have to, you have to, eventually have to release your schedule for that time slot because a lot of people haven't been able to make it, so I can only, I can count maybe six or seven cancellations just this year, yeah.
Member Bouders?
Madam, Madam Mayor, this city clerk provided us in the agenda packet, the details for every one of these items, and it includes the meeting calendar for them, and this body meets quarterly. It meets on the third Thursday of February, May, and November, and the second Thursday of September at 6:30 PM. Obviously, those meetings can be rescheduled by the board if it wishes to, but the regular meeting schedule is four times per year, 6:30 PM.
I think I can do this, and it looks like it's only four times a year. Looks like there is a remote option for all of them, right? Or not? Am I not seeing the remote option?
I don't think so.
By Zoom? There is not a remote option?
They've never extended a remote option, but they wouldn't have so many cancellations, yeah.
But it's an, that's fine. I think I, I will have to find out. Most, most of these meetings do have a remote option. If anyone knows how to answer that, I would welcome an answer to that.
My understanding is it depends on the body itself. Some do not, some that I serve on do not. It depends on their governance.
I will dare to volunteer for this. Because the timing is fine.
Okay.
The meeting timing is fine, and it, I think I just would have to go to Dublin for that meeting, correct? Because that's the venue of it, from what I just saw on the, on the screen.
Yes, that's the venue.
Yep.
Councilmember Pryforce, I will take that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mura, are you still fine serving as alternate?
Uh, yes, that's fine.
Any other members? Any other changes? Seeing, oh, was that a hand? Nope, a scratch, okay. I'll now call for public comment. Any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, please do so now. Seeing no one approach the podium. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers online?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Any written comment cards?
No.
Thank you. Closing public comment. Seeing and hearing, no further discussion from members, do we have a motion?
I, I do have a, a question. Looks like some of these committees do not have a council member on them. So can we get a community person if we cannot have a council member on some of these?
Can you be specific which one you're talking about?
Uh, for example, if the AC Fire Advisory Commission, if I couldn't make it, or, or Councilmember Mura couldn't make the alternate, would we be able to have a, a community person? I see that some of these, like Emeryville Transportation Management Association has community member Elizabeth Cooley and Robert Lee.
Unless it's stated that there is a space for a resident, then no.
I, I did not see that, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion?
I would be happy to make a motion. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve as the 2024 roster of county, regional, and state bodies, a repeat of the 2023 roster with the following changes, that the Alameda County Mayor's Conference member is Mayor Welch, and the alternate is Vice Mayor Mura, and that the East Bay Community Energy JPA Board member is Councilmember Carr with an alternate of Councilmember Bouders, and that the AC Fire Advisory Commission's member is now Councilmember Carr. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Bouders, second by Carr. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mura.
Aye.
And Mayor Welch.
Aye. Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, the time is 9:14. This meeting is adjourned.